No.
All right. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press, The Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of this meeting. Please stand for salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I start, if we could just take a minute in our own little heads and say gratefulness and prayers down to Florida, South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, and Georgia. Make sure we all keep them in our prayers. Okay. First reading of ordinance 2024-23, amending Chapter 43 of the Township Code entitled Fire Department Volunteer so as to remove the Bamber Lakes Fire Company as a designated fire company.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 180 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Fire Prevention so as to delete reference to the Bamber Lakes Volunteer Fire Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2024-24, amending Chapter 180 of the Township Code entitled the Fire Prevention so as to delete reference to the Bamber Lakes Fire Company.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 43 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Fire Department Volunteers so as to remove the Bamber Lakes Volunteer Fire Company Number One as a designated fire company within the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-272, opposing the New Jersey DEP proposed land resource protection rules under the New Jersey PAC initiative.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, opposing the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections proposed land resource protection rules under the NJ PAC initiative. These rules that they're looking to put in place would devalue land that is east of Vertine.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-273, authorizing an agreement with the County of Ocean Recycling Center Use.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the County of Ocean for recycling center use and revenue sharing agreement. This is a two-year agreement, just so that we can continue to use the facility.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-274, authorizing an agreement with the County of Ocean for leaf and vegetative waste composting program.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local service agreement with the County of Ocean for the Ocean County Leaf and Vegetative Waste Composting Program. This is a biannual agreement that we do to continue to participate in the composting program.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-275, authorizing an agreement with the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office for their Drug Recognition Call Out Program.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local service agreement with the County of Ocean for police services for the Drug Recognition Expert Call Out Program. This is an annual resolution and agreement that we do with the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-276, authorizing an agreement with the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office for driving while intoxicated enforcement program.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local service agreement with the County of Ocean for police services for the driving while intoxicated enforcement program. Same thing, this is with the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office, and we are compensated for these types of calls from them through funding that they've received from the state.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-277, authorizing the township to enter into cooperative purchasing agreement to purchase fuel.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the Township of Lacey to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the lead agency, County of Somerset, for the purchase of work materials and supplies pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 11 dash 11-5. This is for the purchase of diesel fuel.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-278, awarding contracts for the purchase of bulk bituminous material.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding contracts for the purchase of bulk bituminous material. We are entering into contracts with two vendors. Our primary vendor is Brickwall, and our secondary vendor is Earl, and this is a one-year agreement.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-279, awarding a contract for the rental of the John Deere loaders.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Jesco for the rental of three John Deere 624K loaders with JR-B Quick Disconnect Coupler 2023 or newer for the fall 2024 leaf collection and the 2024-2025 snow season.
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-280, amending a contract with Dusty &amp; Sager Incorporated to add additional public defenders.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending a contract with Dusty &amp; Sager Incorporated as public defender to add Brandon E. DeJesus and Damian Majewski as additional public defenders.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-281, appointing a deputy tax assessor.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing James Robinson as deputy tax assessor.
Move it.
Second.
Can I have our new employee stand up for a quick moment just to congratulate them? Congratulations. Congratulations. Welcome to board. Go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-282, authorizing the tax collector to hold an electronic tax sale.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to hold an electronic tax sale.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-283, authorizing the refund of a fee collected for a lead-based paint inspection.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of monies charged for a lead-based paint inspection. This resident accidentally double-paid by paying once to the township directly and once to the company that we're contracted with to perform the inspection.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-284, authorizing the refund of a building department fee.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacey Township Building Department. The resident decided not to move forward with the project.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-285, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-286, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $6,541,359.97.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Monthly reports.
Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of September collected receipts the amount of $5,805. Municipal Court for the month of August collected receipts the amount of $20,072.90. Treasurers, Public Works Department report road opening permits, $2,835 for September. Recycling commodity in the amount of $1,395. Truck parking in the amount of $668. And also municipal docks in the amount of $870 for the month of August.
Motion.
Community development for the month of September was $69,916. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Motion to approve township minute meetings from September 26, 2024.
Move it.
Second. Abstain.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Abstain.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Couple of short comments tonight, since we have two senior communities in our neighborhood. I was on a Zoom the other day. You know that I'm in the healthcare field. Take a look and take a deep dive into your Medicare. It seems to change every year. It becomes more expensive, and there are less benefits. One of the comments on Zoom the other day was that these monies are being funneled away from Medicare, little by little, whether it's stealthy or not, and given to other groups. And I think that's wrong, because these are seniors that have been paying into this all their working lives. And that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's their money. I hope it's there for me. I'm 56. I have doubts that it will be in some iteration, but it should be. Which leads me into what the mayor opened the meeting with, when we talk about the southern states, to actually hear our Vice President say that FEMA has run short of funds, when we have probably seven or eight states, and we've all seen the pictures. I know it's going to sound political, but it's not political. There's a bumper sticker I've seen recently, "Everything I needed to know about life I learned in a sandbox in kindergarten." That was true. The other thing was, my grandmother told me before she died in 95, and she said, "Peter, you can like who you want, you can take care of everybody, but remember, charity starts at home." When I look at home, I think of this country. We give 24.6 billion bucks abroad just to Ukraine. I was in a meeting the other night with a senator who is a great friend to Lacey Township, Senator Amato, and he said, "All the people in the South should..." It was meant as a joke, and everyone laughed until we caught it, and it registered in our brains. And he said, "Everyone in the South should identify as Ukrainian." So it sounded funny, until it hit you, and it sunk in through your gray matter, and then it nauseated you, because it is awful. Charity should start at home. It's your tax money. Those people need help. They paid into the system in the soup, and they should get it. Try to end on a good note before the blood pressure goes up. Lacey Day this Sunday, please bring the kids out. Bring the families out. It's good, it's free, it's wonderful, it's everything that's good about Lacey Township. And now I will address, in closing comments, forked rumor. A guy told me a long time ago to my left, he said, "Peter, forked rumor." And I never forgot it. So there is a rumor going around that there's going to be a certain witch doctor at the Halloween scare fest, and a certain committee member's house has turned into, I guess, more or less, a Hollywood building ground for all kinds of props and what have you for the scare fest. So my wife will be acting in it. I tried to get... Last time I did it a few years ago, I was the COVID virus. I didn't have a voice for several weeks. So she loves Halloween, she's doing it. I applaud her for it. Please take your kids out. We had 1,500 people last year. It's great for the town, it's great for the kids. We started it as a drive-through during COVID, because we wanted our kids to have a Halloween, and they did, and we just kept it. So we, my wife and I, have done less than zero percent for it. The comments and the kudos go to DPW, Recreation, all the volunteers, the kids from the high school, all the actors. They're working really hard on this. It was really entertaining, it's not too bad, not too gory, it's really well-done, it's age-appropriate for everybody. Please try to get out if you can, and remember, our veterans are coming up. Veterans Day will be here, 11/11/11, at 11:00 in Bicentennial Park. Mayor, we'll say some words, because we love those men and women very, very much. Sorry, I'm long-winded. Mayor, that's it. Thank you all.
That's fine, Deputy Mayor, no problem. Mr. Dyckhoff?
Just my prayers for all those affected by the two recent hurricanes in Southeast, pray that they don't get hit again as the season hasn't ended. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyckhoff. Mr. Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we passed a resolution opposing the new DEP land use protection rules. We do this on occasion, it doesn't usually do very much, but we try and give it the old college try, and send out our opposition resolutions to Trenton when we feel the need to. The new land use rules on the water, the public comment period is around November 1st, which is why we're sending this resolution out. But I sat in on a webinar with Veronica this past Thursday, and they're always making the rules harder and harder. But in particular, if you own property on the water, they're looking to make any new houses built along the water an additional five feet on your base flood. So that would put the first floor an additional five feet on top of the pilings, which causes all sorts of other problems. But anyway, I just wanted to let anybody know that if you do have property on the water, or have an existing house on the water, to go out and get your permits now before the next summer, when these rules are supposed to go into effect. That was my...
Thanks, Mr. Kennis.
Comments?
Appreciate it. Okay, I'm just going to give you a couple reminders. Saturday, we have the Wing Fest for the Betworks at Cafferty's from 12 to 5. Of course, Lacey Day on Sunday. Just keep sharing this so that people remember the date. On Tuesday, November 19th, we are having a business expo down at the community center, and it's from 5 to 9. Then also, I was asked to also just remind you about our December 14th for the reef placement over in our cemetery, Good Luck Cemetery there. And just wanted to mention that we had someone come in and bring up the number that we needed, because we were a little short, and a business came in. They'd rather not be mentioned, but they wanted us... We wanted them to know that we are thankful for them for coming out. The ladies who handled this whole reef across America, Jennifer and her daughter Vanessa, and the whole group of volunteers, they're just phenomenal. They do a phenomenal job, and we should be very proud to have them as part of our township. Other than that, I'm opening up the floor to the public. Anybody? Okay. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and Committee, and Lacey citizens. I wasn't going to actually have an address tonight, but on my walk, I was stopped by one of our residents, and they just reiterated certain things to me, and then I thought about what they said, and I felt that I needed to make some comments like this. And so, first of all, I wanted to thank our mayor for the compliment that she gave me at the last meeting, when she said I was exhausting. This tells me that I'm doing a good job, because you should be exhausted, and the public should be here and questioning every move that you are making. Two, I think you should take a friendly hint and take some lessons on how to address your constituents from our very professional police department. They know how to treat the township's citizens with respect and kindness, not with disdain and rudeness, which we have all witnessed time and time again at these meetings. At the last meeting, Mayor Juliano, you asked me, "Why do I live here?" Quite frankly, that is an absurd question, and totally out of line for you, the mayor, to be asking any taxpayer of this town such a question. But to answer it, quite frankly, it's none of your business. It is my right as a taxpayer to criticize things that I am not being done correctly or with the taxpayer's best interest in mind. After all, I pay taxes along with all the other citizens in this town, and that allows this town to operate. And we, the people, should be treated with utter respect and nothing less. After all, you would not exist if it wasn't for all of us. Which brings me to this question. Do you ever watch yourselves on YouTube and see how you come off to the public? It's really quite embarrassing at times, and so uncalled for. It doesn't help that you make your snide comments, which quite frankly, no one is interested in. You are paid by the taxpayers who elected you into the position, and we, the people, are not accountable to you. Please always remember that. Also, when I'm speaking, and other citizens in this town are addressing this body, please do not interrupt us without permission. For instance, at the last meeting, you called out someone from the audience for speaking up, and your response and tone and attitude were appalling. That is a real discouragement for our citizens, who take the time to come to these meetings to be seen and be heard about their issues. People sometimes get emotional about the things that they are passionate about, and you need to keep that in mind. Again, changing the times of these meetings for your own convenience only proves the point that you're not interested in the electorate or their concerns, and this is a serious problem. It's bad enough that there is an obvious disconnect with this body and the electorate that you serve. Things really need to change, and I have to ask you this question. Why are you the mayor if you can't control your obvious dislike of the citizens who you are elected to serve? The only time you seem to all give a rat's ass is when it's time for your reelection. Otherwise, it's business as usual. This is a large part of why politicians in general are held in such contempt by the general public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Committee. I just want to make a comment before I start at the very few people that showed up at the meeting today. And I talk to people all the time, being I'm around and I'm retired. And I just want to repeat comments from people, and they don't want me to use their name, but they attended the meeting, zoning board meeting, over the legality of putting the gas station and quick check there. And like me, we sat here for three and a half hours, brought up a lot of really good points that really weren't addressed. It almost seemed like we were going to take a timeout, look at what the people were saying, and then return two weeks later or whatever with some solid answers. But instead, at 10:05, one of the members made a decision, pushed everything aside, and said, "I'm going to approve it." And the rest of the committee felt like pigeons, and all agreed with that individual. And that is a very good example about the poor attendance that you get at these meetings, because the comments they made to me was, "We were there. We came up with good points, and the township didn't have any answers, but appeared to say that we're going to look at it and then get back to you, and then reverse course at 10 o'clock." I just want to make that comment, because I see the attendance even tonight as rather poor, and I just hope there's a lot of people watching this on TV. I do want to talk about quickly, and to remind the committee and the mayor, that I'm a spokesperson for a lot of people in this town. I'm also a member of the Lacey Historical Society, which I'm very proud of, even though I'm kind of ticked off at them, because they're not really putting a big push up on what's happening with the old community center and the Wharton House. And I believe one of our core duties as members of the historical society is the preservation of everything that we can preserve within this township. And we just feel that, I feel, that the historical committee, like a lot of other people, are intimidated, and they don't want to speak out. There's a lot of people in this world who think things, but don't say them. I happen to be one of the people that do think it and do say it. So anyways, I come here, I promote both my concerns and the concerns of important issues that affect us all, when I come in front of the committee. Therefore, we, the people, and this is not only what Richard said, but it's comments I hear on the outside, too, about when tough questions come in front of the committee, sometimes, not always, there's personal attacks at the speaker. And I just want to remind you that we, the people, do not believe it is the purpose of this township committee to respond to our questions in such a way that is belittling and critical of the disposition of any speaker. That when acting in the official capacity as our elected leaders, this committee should focus more on the issues at hand and less on the personal attacks. Put another way, this committee must set aside the personal spite intended to offend and intimidate. Instead, a more honest, transparent approach would be a positive start to mend the relationship and restore trust in our elected leaders. After all, this is the committee that bypassed the people and secretly, secretly, negotiated a financial disaster with Johnson Controls, costing the township hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money, and some of you up there, not all of you, almost arrogantly claim that it was a good idea. I will say that Peggy Sue, she was a mayor at the time, but she publicly admitted that the committee may have gone about the township new building, which I called a $100 million building, in the wrong way. So I do commend her, that she was the only one that had probably thought and said the right thing. I also want to take a turn in the past of what happened with the township dock. There was the threat to go out, they were selling it. People ran to other places to dock their boats. I know people down there, I go out of boats down at that township dock. And what I hear from those people is that because of the threat was there, there were at least 30 to 40 vacant slips that allegedly, I didn't confirm it, cost the township $30,000 in revenue. But instead of writing the ship, this committee moved to ignore the Charles Smith deed and the will of the people by selling the property belonging to the citizens of Lacey Township. This committee justified this action by moving the Charles Smith name to the Knights of Columbus building, claiming that it satisfied the will, that it didn't matter, as long as they put that name on any building, that it justified the deed and the will of the people. We could even have put it on an outhouse in Bamber and made that the Charles Smith building if that was the case. And then when we bring it to this committee about the legality of what they did, that the transaction of selling that property was solely the responsibility of the title company, and that the committee was innocent of any wrongdoing. Let it be known that we come here in peace, and we only want harmony with our elected leaders. This can only be achieved by our leaders putting us first, and not desires that financially cripple our township and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak?
Hi, I had a poem to write. My name is Alisa Waller. I'm from Crestwood Drive, Lacey, Forkett River. Lacey, Forker River. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. So I had a poem about the town, but I just got out of work late. And so I just want to say that the poem was named, was named, "It Used To Be." So there used to be a stop and, a shopping bag where the Wawa is. There used to be a lake that we could swim on on Crestwood Drive. There used to be a community center that we could have my 16-year-old daughter's 16th birthday at. You know, there used to be so many things in Lacey that are gone. There used to be a two-lane road on Lacey Road, now it's four lanes. And my son is still here and my daughter moved out. I've been here since 1990. I've lived in Beechwood before that. My dad built tons of houses in this town. And I don't understand why our township here is getting rid of a community center that was left to our community, for the community. And I know Peggy, that you mentioned at one of your meetings that the community is the most important thing. I remember that you said that. And I feel like that there's, we're forgetting our community. We need that community house, we need the Warden House. That gentleman left that to our town and to just get rid of it, it's like saying we don't care about the past. So the past is being erased right now by just making these decisions. So I just wanted to show support for keeping the community building, keeping our town small, keeping it special and stop building, building, building. Because the money isn't coming to us, it's going somewhere else. I feel like our tack, we built a Home Depot, there used to be no Home Depot. And we had a Kohl's, we have, what else do we have? We have the Aldi's now. We have all these stores that apparently in 19, when it became built and there was this big fight about the rail trail and Home Depot, it was all about ratables. Let's try to get some ratables back. Where are the ratables? Where are all those benefits? You know, like what's happening with all those ratables that we're making? And now we're still destroying and rebuilding new stuff and we're not even helping our schools. So I just wanted to show support for that part of our, whatever you guys are going to decide. I don't agree with destroying anything in this town. I agree with keeping it small. So I just wanted to show, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. My name is Andy Masieolic from 1706 Bencle in Forker River here. I got one question and hopefully you got a simple answer. It's about the Forker River Beach jungle. It is October, isn't it?
Forker River Beach what?
I call it the jungle because that's what it looks like right now. Because they haven't cut the grass yet. And the park, it's, it's supposed to be cut now.
October 15th is the date. It's not October 1st and today's only the 10th.
I got you. So it doesn't say that. This says October to June. Okay, just to let you know. So is it scheduled to be cut?
It's made to October.
I have to check the public works. I don't have that answer yet.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak?
Seeing none.
Go ahead.
My name is David Olin. I'm from Lenoka Harbor. Some of you might have seen my signs outside. I'm coming back from a previous meeting talking about Walkable Streets. I forgot the exact name of it.
Complete Streets.
Complete Streets, thank you. That Lacey has signed on to. Now, the protest before from you guys was that you couldn't do anything due to, or you were, but slowly, due to the roads that were connected to the schools were owned by the county or state. Now, I would like to follow that up with, what have you done in regards to reaching out to either the county or the state to progress, the progression of completing these streets into complete streets?
We meet with the county engineer every year. It is county roads with the, that all of our schools are on. We meet annually with the county engineer, that's a given. We do meet whenever other times are necessary. You know, we've met quite a bit with them based on the construction that they're doing at the corner, at the traffic light on Western and Manchester. We've made some design changes along for that. The town actually had put, had LED lights put in there to make it brighter for the walkers, like earlier in the morning and stuff like that, because we've had a lot of accidents there. But we meet and we talk to the county, probably on a week, not meet with the county, probably talk to the county on a weekly basis with regards to streets and roads and different things there. And again, part of that project is not to put in any additional sidewalks for that area. They feel the sidewalks are all there while they may be missing on certain sides.
The last two, sorry, the last two times we contacted DOT, which is Drutineine, they wanted us to pay for the engineering study to change the lights at a Taylor Lane. In addition to that, we tried to put a crosswalk in at the intersection, intersection of Beach Boulevard and they said it did not warrant a crosswalk.
Really? We can't do it because it's their road.
So we do, the point is, we do contact all these agencies regularly.
Barry.
Harry Bender. I wouldn't even say it. Different subject because I want to address something that Deputy Mayor mentioned. There's money going to various places, not just to Ukraine.
That's right.
And we're funding what I consider genocide in the Middle East. Okay? And the military budget is approaching a trillion dollars. So if you took a tiny, tiny little piece of that, imagine what we could do down here in Ocean County as far as mass transportation, instead of having one bus that runs up and down Route 9. Because right now, if you're a senior citizen and you live down here and you don't have family, you don't have friends and they tell you you can't drive anymore, you starve. And that's something that needs to be addressed. Just wanted to put that forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. Anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak before we close the floor?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-287, resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State in New Jersey, authorizing the convening of an executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act to discuss pending anticipated litigation in matters of real estate.
Move it. Second?
Deputy Mayor Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Move it.
There will be no further decision.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No further business.